Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Madison County Board of Education regular session. Mr. Bill Murray, do you mind praying over me, sir?
I do. Before I pray, I want to acknowledge that Mr. Trewick and his wonderful staff are putting this together. I want to reach out to the three elementary school principals who are here representing those five institutions. And of course, it'll just bring back a flood of memories for me because I taught in this building for seventeen years. For those of you that are new to Madison County, this building was built in nineteen ninety-seven, as I recall. And we had one time fourteen hundred and fifty kids in here. Now we're running just about a thousand, just under a thousand. And the quality of teachers and principals that work daily with our children in this building, Legacy, Monrovia Elementary, and Endeavor is very high. Every now and then, teachers and principals get frustrated that they don't feel like they don't have the respect that they deserve. In my opinion, teachers, principals, assistant principals, everybody involved in education is a public servant. I will not tolerate these good people being public targets, made any way. We will stand behind our people when they have to talk to, talk to parents whose children have misbehaved. We will help our people, our teachers, and our children behave well at school. We will continue the excellent results we give this education with the support of this wonderful community. With that, that's my prayer. Heavenly God, we're so thankful that you can look down upon us as we meet in this building and represent all the students in District Five, as well as the entire Monrovia Middle School feeder pattern and all of Madison County. Please look after these students in their last month of school. Make sure you spread a watchfulness over every activity they do, both in and out of school, so that they can fully enjoy their summer vacations. Protect these families as they educate and raise these wonderful children. Guide all of us to give the best we can so that they can grow up to be outstanding citizens that this school has produced year after year. Jesus Christ, we know you. Be great. Amen.
Mr. Superintendent, before we start, I believe the trip is coming up to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Board President, Mr. Brooks, and Superintendent, Mr. Puebick, and the rest of the board members. Thank you, guys, for giving us this opportunity to host the board meeting here tonight. At this time, I do, I would like to ask, we've got three members of our local troop here. We've got Jack, Joan, and Forrest. They're going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Superintendent?
I recommend approval of the agenda dated April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five motion.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I recommend approval of the minutes stated March seventh, March twenty-one, and March twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. Motion.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor? Madison County School System recognitions, Mr. Superintendent?
Okay, before I turn it over to Mr. Trewick and our principals from the feeder schools to Monrovia Middle School, Mr. Perkins went down to the state board meeting recently, and the resolution was a word to Madison County, as well as other systems, for the renewal of Purple Star schools, which is, you know, as you know, is a military, closer to military institution. We're very close with Redstone Arsenal. And I just want to read the Madison County School System schools that have, again, achieved Purple Star status. These are in alphabetical order. So Buckhorn High School, Buckhorn Middle School, Central School, Harvest Elementary School, Endeavor Elementary School, Hazel Green Elementary School, Hazel Green High School, Legacy Elementary School, Lynn Fanning Elementary School, Madison County Elementary School, Madison County High School, Madison County Virtual Academy, Meridianville Middle School, Moores Mill Intermediate School, New Hope High School, New Market Elementary School, Owens Crossroads Elementary School, School, Riverton Intermediate School, Spartan Ninth Grade School, and Spartan High School. So I want to congratulate our schools that have achieved Purple Star status again. With that, sir, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Trewick. Thank you for hosting us this evening, Mr. Trewick.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys, for being here again on behalf of the nine hundred and eighty-five kids that we have here and ninety-two staff members. Welcome to Monrovia. Just a couple of updates and some highlights from the school year for us. We have achieved, the last three school years, we have increased, or three out of the four last school years, we've increased our state report card score a point or two for the la, three out of the last four. We have consistently made increased progress on state assessment, the A-CAP assessment for proficiency. And the last, two out of the last three years, we had a hundred percent growth on the A-CAP. So a hundred percent of our kids, we just finished A-CAP last week. We, I'm proud to say that we have a hundred percent of our kids that tested. And that's, that's an achievement in and of itself, getting all those kids tested. So we hope, we're looking forward to the, to the results that are coming back this summer for those. Some of our extracurricular achievements this year, our football team went undefeated. They lost in the county championship game. They had to finish the season with an eight and one, eight and one record. Our seventh grade girls' basketball team went undefeated, won the county championship. Our boys' soccer team finished runner-up in the two-five-six cup. And that's not just about us in county. That includes teams from all the way up the Florins. And so they finished runner-up in the county champ, or in the, the two-five-six cup just this past week. Our Scholars Bowl team has, has consistently been a, continued to be a top performer despite changing hands with our, with our sponsors. Mr. Holman and Mr. Cox have both moved on from Scholars Bowl here in Monrovia. And we've got two new folks who have taken it over, and they continue that, that tradition of excellence there and added a whole other trophy to the trophy case this year. Our Hawks Racing team is ranked top in their division, not just in the state, but in the country. And our Hawks Racing team has, has done a fantastic job being as, as new as they are. It's just the third year for them, and they're performing very well in their division. Our Science Olympiad team received a trophy for the first time this year at the state tournament in, in Auburn. They came in third place, just a, just a little bit shy of getting taken home the silver medal. But they did a fantastic job, and I appreciate the work that Miss Equus does with our Science Olympiad team. Our choir program, along with our band program, as I mentioned earlier, what about those band members there? They all have received superior ratings at the state choir ensemble, the state choir assembly. We also had two students in particular who participated, this is a mouthful, in the organization of American Code Elite Educators National Youth Trouble Choir in Chicago. That's the first time that we've had two students, or that we've had any students from Monrovia participate in that choir program there in Chicago, and they both went and represented us very well. Our band program is getting ready to go to Dollywood for the Music in the Parks, Parks competition. Mr. Dowdy has led a team there every year for the last, probably fifteen years to that particular competition. And I don't think, I think there's one year that they have not won first place in that competition. And that's, band, band programs from across the country that go to Dollywood for the Music in the Parks competition there. Just a couple other updates. Our Veterans Day program continues to grow this year. We had the opportunity for Mr. Lambert, who leads that program, to be recognized and honored in Madison Living Magazine. They put together a really nice article there that recognized the efforts that he's, that he has put forth for Veterans Day. This past year, we had over two hundred veterans present in our Veterans Day program. Looking forward to having them again this year. Our Hawks Kitchen Crew received a one hundred on their last health code rating. But not just the one hundred there, they also received a perfect score from the state auditor for our Childish Nutrition Program. So they came in from the state and audited us there. And then we also were lucky enough to be chosen by the state examiner's office to be audited for our bookkeeping office there as well. She had, she had a really good, really good results from that audit also. So it's just a lot of great things happening here in Monrovia. Really, really proud of our staff and our students, and looking forward to wrapping up this school year. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. If I've not met you, my name is Catherine Rogers, and I'm the principal at Legacy Elementary. This is my fifth year there. It is an absolutely fabulously amazing school. I feel blessed, very blessed, to be able to work with the people that I do every day. The teachers put their heart and soul into these children, and so does our community, so I feel very lucky. I just wanted to briefly go over, because I know a lot of you know that we have the largest outdoor classroom in the state of Alabama. I'm sure that you have driven by and seen the goats and chickens. But I did want just to kind of talk about how that impacts our learning because for so many of our students, we focus on books and screens. But this outdoor learning lab provides our students with opportunities that they would never have. Whether it be baiting a fish with a live worm, getting their hands in the dirt, and watching a seed go from, something to go from a seed to a vegetable, or a seed to a flower, getting to feed goats and chickens, running from roosters and geese, which I do on a daily basis when I have to feed them. That was not in my contract, by the way, feeding animals. But it is just, it's a fabulous resource for our children. We are very lucky to be in a partnership with the Alabama Wildlife Federation. We were one of just a few schools in the state that piloted a junior scientist program this school year where our kids got to actually get in the dirt with their hands and earn merit badges by being outside and learning. Also, our school received a ten thousand dollar grant through R C and D. And with that grant, we've been able to purchase new work tables and picnic tables for our students to work outside. We have been able to purchase a sound garden for our special needs students that get to go out there and play with different instruments. Our pre-K, we have a developmental pre-K and pre-K class who go out there and read books and then see actual things that they're reading about. Today, we had, our second grade students were doing a unit on bees and pollination. So we actually had a beekeeper come out. So I encourage and invite you guys to come by if you have not and see it. It's a, it's a fabulous piece of education that we're so proud of at Legacy, and I just wanted to share that with you guys.
Thanks, Chris Rogers.
Good evening. Oh, can you hear me? I'm naturally loud, so I don't want to, like, can y'all hear me? Okay. I'm Dana Cooper. I'm the principal at Endeavor Elementary School. This is my second year at Endeavor, and I am loving the community. It's been an amazing experience. So I just wanted to give you some highlights from Endeavor in the last month or so. So Endeavor has this amazing Green Power team. And if you don't know about Green Power, it is where the students actually put together and build a battery-operated car, and then they race that car all over the place, right? So super proud of our team. We actually have two cars. We have a brand-new car this year and an older car. On the twenty-ninth, it was the big Huntsville City race. There were over sixty-three participating schools, and Endeavor came in number one. Our one ninety-nine car came in first place. And then on April fifth, both of our cars came in the top ten. And last week in Phoenix City, which is another big race for us, we came in second and tenth place, so we have a new trophy that we can proudly display in front of the school. Our Green Power team also last weekend were able to reconnect with a team from the U.K. That they made connections with last year, so that was super exciting for the kids. They've been communicating back and forth. What kind of snacks do you want from the U.S.? That kind of thing, and talking all about Green Power. So that's been super exciting. So overall, our newest car is actually ranked number three in the nation, and we are only four points away from that number one ranking. And so we've got another big race coming in Talladega, and that's where the rubber meets the road for Endeavor, so go Cubs. Our student council recently volunteered at the house of the harvest and served over four hundred families. And we had about fifteen to twenty kids participate in that, and they will actually go back next weekend on the twenty-sixth and do the same. This Tuesday, Special Olympics, we had seven students participate in the Special Olympics. In the softball throw, we took first and third place. In the fifty-meter run, first and third place. The one hundred meter run, first and second place. And the mini javelin, first and third. So super proud of my babies. Today was a special day at Endeavor. Since we don't have school tomorrow, we had our annual Easter egg hunt out on the soccer field where the Easter Bunny even made an appearance today. Endeavor is just an upcoming event. We're hosting a chess tournament, and that will be on April twenty-seventh, and that begins at one o'clock. So we like to do that every year, too. We have a beginner's chess club and an advanced chess club. And so our kids participate, but it's opened up to everyone in the district, and you just pass it around. Anybody's welcome. And then this semester, so don't know if you're familiar, the state is pushing out a new platform, which is going to be super beneficial for data and collection for our students, how they're doing when they move from school to school. And the state, we can pick up that data and run with it and keep providing quality education and meeting their needs. And it's called Analytics and Insights. And Endeavor, who I met with Kevin Connell, or Canel, sorry, from ARI at the state level, and Endeavor is one of the few schools in the state actually implementing this fully before the mandate. And we've been doing that since January. So super excited to make connections at the state level to be able to learn more and how to make it work for us, but also to give feedback and how it can benefit everybody. So, thank you.
Thanks, Miss Cooper.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Reasoner, and I'm the new principal at Monrovia Elementary. I just started in January. However, I am not new to this community. I grew up in this community. I taught at Monrovia Middle for a few years, and I actually taught at Monrovia Elementary for nineteen years before I got into administration. So this is my community where I grew up, my kids grew up, so this is kind of home for me. This is twenty-seven years in education for me, so this is like a full circle for me going from being a nine-year-old kid at Monrovia Elementary to coming back and being the principal. So it's, it's been a full circle moment for me. Had a lot of kids today come back. We had some baseball players come back. They were former students. So kind of a neat thing going on with everything. So a couple of highlights for us. Monday is a big engineering day for us. And so if you've never been to it, it's, it's fantastic. They're actually setting up for it right now. So they have exhibits for the first half of the day, and all kinds of hands-on things. All of our kids get to go to it. UAH, NASA, and the Spartan Engineering Academy actually come and help us. And then we do rocket launches in the afternoon, and they do bridge breaking in the afternoon as well. So our A students get to showcase their projects. So if you've never been and never seen it, it's really a, a neat, and it's an all-day event. We just had, we just participated in a track meet at Spartan last Saturday. Our coach said we had about fifty participants. We had a, a large group. That she did not have individual awards to give me at this time, so they're still calculating that we had a, a large group. We do have a Green Power team as well, and they have done three competitions so far. And each time, they've gotten a higher score. So I think, if I remember right, they started out at like fourteenth, and they went to seventh place, and then they've gone to third. We also had two nights since I've been there, where we had a history and literacy night, where our fourth and fifth graders had projects. They presented. We had prop, we had about seventy-five percent of our fourth and fifth graders actually have a project set up for parents to come in and talk about their project, and so it was really a neat family atmosphere. And we also had a P.E. night, which, you know, spring's busy with spring sports, but we had over a hundred kids come to a P.E. night, and they had games, activities, and everything set up. Thank you.
So, follow up with Ms. Cooper's comment about Special Olympics. I had the pleasure of being there on Tuesday, and I'll tell you what. If you ever get the opportunity to go and watch Special Olympics, it is a phenomenal day to see those students compete, whether they win, lose, or draw, just to compete. It's a sheer joy on their face. But it's not just the Special Olympic athletes that are our students. It's our students that go and support them, our students from our high schools and from our middle schools that are there and walking with them to an event and seeing them and hugging them and cheering them on as they finish the event. I recommend to anybody to go and see that. It's a phenomenal day. And we had great participation. It was a beautiful day. God shed beautiful light on us and no rain. Just a little bit of wind. It was a little cool, but that's okay. As long as they were running with the wind, they were faster, so that worked out well. But take your, take an opportunity and go see it the next year, or the next year when it's in the spring. And the other comment I want to quickly make was, this is the conclusion of our tour of schools for this year. When we start back to school next year, we will start over again, and we will have five new schools that we'll go visit, one in each of the districts, so that they'll be able to sort of, we'll be able to see all the schools. But this was a sampling of what we heard from these four schools. We've heard this throughout this county this past year, all the phenomenal things that go on that our schools do and the achievements that our students make. You know, there's a lot of people talking bad about public education as a whole, but all you have to do is come to one of these meetings and hear all the great things that are going on in our schools and with our students. And I'm telling you what, public education is the way. And Madison County Schools is a fantastic district to be part of because we have great educators, we have great administrators, and we have great staff and excellent students. And I just wanted to thank all of our principals for what they do and for hosting us this year, and looking forward to starting this off again in the fall of next year.
The commonality from each one of these five districts is each one of these different communities are absolutely supporting the education of their kids in their schools. That'll be the Haver Creek Community, Buckhorn Community, the New Hope Community, the Madison Crossroads Harvest Community, all of our communities, different as they are, stand behind the tour, the education of their children.
Do I have anything else for district highlights? I'll, I'll, I'll just say that I've got two high school teams in the state playoffs, and I've got Central will be right over here in Monrovia late at night for the championship. So I'll try to catch some of that to get out of here, but that's all I've got. If I got anything else? All right, Mr. Superintendent, informational items?
Yes, sir. So before we go to the caring link, it is that time of the year where we address the salary schedule. This has been an interesting year. Money has been tight. We have been doing a whole lot of growing, and there's a lot of debt that we've incurred. One of the positives is with our state legislation. When Governor Ivey set out the A T supplemental, she had budgeted twenty-five million dollars for Madison County schools. Going through our meetings, we were told through ASBO, through S S A, that do not expect the governor's budget to stay. It was going to be cut by the legislation. They said, do not, you know, best-case scenario, count on what you had for last year. We were slotting, last year we got nineteen million. A T money goes pretty much to a lot of our capital needs. So we had to roll over some of our general fund money for our capitals. But the state legislation where the E T F comes from first is comes from the Senate. Then it goes to the House. It's already passed the Senate. It's now in the House chamber. They have gone back, and we're not getting, as of right now, we're not getting nineteen million. They're getting twenty-two million from the state for the A T. So with that, and the new salary schedule, there's a few changes. One of them is that I am proposing that we give the employees in Madison County a thousand-dollar raise across the board for every position that we have in the salary schedule. That would be a cost of two-point-five million dollars annually to our budget. But the, because of the A T money, we have that now. We did not have that before. And so I'm talking with the C S F O that can be handled through the budget moving forward. And so that's one of the changes in the salary schedule. The other, the other salary changes are, you know, we're hiring a new C S F O, and we're going to go to a contracted service. and we're going to go to a contracted service rather than a salary scheduled. So, I'm proposing that we remove the CSFO salary schedule from the salary schedule book. And then, um, we've also talked about the, um, school psychologist position, and there's a couple changes in there, whether, you know, if you guys approve us moving forward with the school psychologist position. If you approve it, there's some things that we have to do in the salary schedule that I'm outlined for you. If we don't approve it, then those will remain as they were. So, there's really minimal, um, changes in the salary schedule other than a thousand dollars across the board from every position that's in the salary schedule for us moving forward. So, that's the proposal there, and, um, and what we're gonna have to do is, once I propose it to y'all, we'll have you, this will have to go to the policy review for input from them as well, and they get thirty days to look at it. So, I'll be putting it in the back for you guys to discuss and look at and approve if you guys so choose to, um, the maybe, so it'll be in there.
I'm a hundred and fifty, two-hundred percent for the raises. Um, I just wanna make sure that next year, we have the funds that we're not needing, and that's a concern, that's the only concern, is putting it on the salary schedule. It's continual, that's two-and-a-half million dollars continual. But I, I'm, and I'm a hundred percent behind. But one thing I would like us to look at is the supplements. As I look through the supplements, the, uh, you look at Coach, the athletics and stuff, they have a zero, one, two on our salary schedule. You get down to the band and other, not just band, but other, on the supplement schedule, and there's no stamps. There's one, they get one check, and that's it. I'd like us to make an opportunity to look at this to make sure. I mean, we're already talking about two-and-a-half million dollars, so what's another hundred, thousand? I mean, we're not talking about a bunch when we talk about supplements, really, in the grand scheme of things. So, I, I would like for us to look at that as we do this.
If I got anything else?
All right, the Carrying Link, Ms. Ponius here.
You guys know what I'm about. I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to them. I apologize for my voice. I sound worse than I feel. I apologize for the person who asked to stand at this mic next. Um, hopefully, I am done being contagious, but, you know, I'll just rub it off a little bit. Um, before I get started, what I'd like you to do is to grab out the index cards and the crayons that you were told to bring tonight. If you could get those out of your bags, back pockets, nothing really. West Jones, not one crayon. Okay, that's fine. Um, we'll move on. You know, we talked about physical education is so important, so we're just gonna go do a quick lap around the school. I see that the board is dressed pretty fancily, so if you guys could go ahead and grab your athletic wear and your sneakers and just go ahead and get that changed, and we will get out there, get our energy out so we can focus. Nope, nothing. Okay. Well, if you didn't know, I didn't expect you to have any of those things, and if you had had those things, you would have ruined everything. So, I appreciate you not, like, raving your crayons, like, "I got these for my kid." No, thank you for holding back. Um, and I'm sorry to deprive you of seeing Mr. Cubic in bike shorts and a muscle tee, but that was never gonna happen. Okay? Um, but there's a moment when you are introduced with a task. And if you don't have the tools you need, there is a spike in adrenaline that happens that makes it impossible for you to focus. And it is a long-term thing. It's not, "Oh, good, she really didn't mean it." When this is for real, and someone is expecting you to produce a tool, or some object, or notes, or an assignment, they're expecting you to do something with an implement you don't have, that panic makes it impossible to do a good job at what you're presented with. And yet, we have kids in our community that face that every single school day. They arrive at school, and they don't have their basic needs met. They arrive at school with no backpack, no notebook, no art implement, no writing implement, but not even that, because we see that, "Oh, they just forgot their backpack." No, they arrive in dirty clothes, 'cause they don't have running water at home. We had that this week. We dealt with that this week. Uh, they arrive with shoes that are too big. Uh, I invite you to play an excellent game of dodgeball in shoes that are too big or shoes that are too small. That doesn't work. They're in shirts that they've worn three days in a row. Um, do you think that that might cause an issue with bullying, confidence, or the lack thereof? So, what we do at the Carrying Link is we set up care closets on-site across the school system and Huntsville City. We're also there, too. And these care closets have brand-new clothes, shoes, toiletries, school supplies on-site every single school day. So, we're meeting the kids where they are with what they need, taking out the requirement of having a parental intermediary, somebody that's been taking them somewhere to access these resources. Those resources are getting right into the hands of the kids that need them, or working with the social workers and the counselors and the principals and the teachers to make sure that the children who most need our resources are getting our resources. And we're also there for emergency situations, when kids have a spill, when a kindergartner doesn't make it to the potty. We don't wanna have to pull mom and dad from work. We don't want that child to sit in the nurse's office all day long. We want them learning, because the entire point of what we are doing is not to just provide the stuff. Everybody thinks it's about providing the stuff, 'cause we got the numbers that show you that we've already given out twenty-four thousand items this school year, this year. And we're not done. We're not done with the school year. We have twelve existing, actually, no, thirteen existing care closets, 'cause Sparkman Middle just got their closet, it's fully operational, and guess what? We actually have fourteen, because today, we installed at Sparkton High School. So, you Monrovia people, you got one for your kids. And I'll do you one better. May first, Sparkman Nine is going in, so have one as they step up. So, Sparkman Nine, Sparkman High gets one. That'll be fifteen across two school systems, okay, that we provide those basic essentials. And so, we have the numbers. We see it's going out. We're doing the things. We're getting it in the hands of the kids that need it, but that's not the point. The point is that you give the child, the student, the teen, what they need to feel confident in the classroom and beyond, so that they can reach their full potential. It's called capitalization. We're going back to school, 'cause we're in school. And I'm not talking about we're going to grammar school, not that kind of capitalization. I know you know that. We're not talking about a weird economic principle. We are talking about the concept that you want to give students, you want to give all people, the ability to reach their full potential with the opportunities that have been given to them. Successful societies have high capitalization rates. They go hand-in-hand. When people are able to meet their full potential, that's good for all of us. I don't know who said and established the myth that, eh, you can't just succeed. Somebody else has to fail. That's wrong. Some people attribute it to Genghis Khan. Some people say Gorbachev. If it was Gorbachev, he meant it humorously, but somebody took it and ran with it. That is incorrect, because if Daniel Evans succeeds, and we've got Ken Cubic succeeding, David Best succeeds, I succeed, does the pie get bigger or smaller? The pie gets bigger. Is it Grandma's fresh-baked apple pie, or is it something out of the frozen food section? It's that wonderful gourmet pie. The quality of the pie, the size of the pie, gets bigger, and we all get a bigger, better piece. So, it is in our best interests to make sure that the next generation that come out of our schools have what they need to reach their full potential, so that they become active, engaged members of society, an improved workforce. These are citizens of our community. So, if you wanna see a thriving society, whether that means a thriving school, or a thriving school district, or a thriving school system, or town, or city, or state, or country, get your capitalization rate up. And you do that by making sure that these students can reach their full potential in the classroom and beyond, and that is what we're doing. So, I don't want you to just see stuff. I don't want you to just see, "Oh, they give out pencils." Yeah, we do that. We got pencils for dates. But that's not what it's about. It's about making sure that the pencil translates into the confidence and the learning that needs to happen, so that that student then finishes high school. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about going to a trade school. We're talking about going to a college. We're talking about getting a job and keeping a job. We're talking about the confidence to do well and keep doing well. So, why am I here? Because I need you. That's why. See if I can get this thing clicking. As Carter promised, he's a man of his word. So, what do we do? We already talked about that. We put in care closets, all the things. Everything we put in our care closets is brand-spanking new. We put no used items in, because if my kids deserve to have new stuff in their closet, so does the least of these. Anybody else's kid deserves some new items. There are plenty of ways to get used items. It's really hard to get children new items, so that's what we do. That's what we prioritize. We are serving, um, twelve thousand students across Madison County as a whole, not just the school system and the fifteen closet locations we already spoke about. What we stock, we get those clothes in there. We get toiletry items. We get school supplies. We have food items. At a lot of our elementary and intermediate schools, we have our snack program. Individual teachers request snack bins, so they get small ones, and then there's a refill station on campus that we refill every week. That's what's great about our closets. We have closet teams, three people that are dedicated per school. They show up every single week. They see what's missing, then somebody delivers it, somebody puts it up. So, if we have fifteen, all right, public education, let's go. We got fifteen, any three? We got forty-five active every single week that show up for your kids. So, that's our food element. We also stock breakfast foods and meal food items for kids who are going home to food insecurity. But we also have other programs, so we get their basic needs met. We make sure that they have the things they need to succeed. But then we have our other programs, and we actually have one of our librarians in the audience. Name is Kelly. How are you? Um, Book Fair program. This is everybody's favorite. Everybody loves the Book Fair program, because everybody has been a kid going to the book fair, and you were either one of two children. You either had money or you didn't, right? So, you either had money for the kitten hanging, just hanging there poster, or you were window shopping and really wishing that you could get something. Well, we're there for the second group. So, we want to promote literacy, 'cause we know that it's important to get books in kids' homes. And part of that is to provide gift certificates for these children to shop their school book fairs, because number one, literacy. Number two, it promotes equity. Number three, it promotes consumer skills. And that's not something I thought about until a librarian brought it to me and said, "Hey, you know what? A lot of these kids that you're serving have never had the chance to go shopping. They don't have those kind of funds in their home." So, they go shopping, and they figure out things about making purchases. And there was a time when they had to figure out tax, um, with the book fair situation, and they also had to weigh your choices. So, you get into this level of financial literacy that they were not exposed to before. We have our Care to Join program. That's extracurriculars. We have funded band fees, um, running club participation, camp invention sponsorships, prom tickets. We have made sure that kids can go to these extras, whether it's just celebrating a milestone like prom, whether it's something like camp invention, where they're getting that enrichment opportunity, because again, capitalization, capitalization, capitalization. Get them there. Give them the opportunities. Give them the chance to show you what they can do. But you gotta get them there. You gotta write the check, and that's what we do. Pop-up prom shop, um, 'cause I'm a stump for volunteers. I'm just gonna tell you, this is, everybody's favorite program is Book Fair. Everybody's favorite volunteer job is prom shop. If you are a lady, you get to help them choose dresses. We take those to the schools. So, we went to Sparkman, we went to Buckhorn, we went to Hazel Green, we went to New Hope, we went to Madison County. We went to all the county high schools this year. We load them up in a U-Haul. I drive the U-Haul. I drove a U-Haul today. It's scary. If you see a U-Haul, and then you notice that I'm behind the wheel, just move. Go a different route, okay? But we show up, and we bring in the dresses for students who can't afford the very expensive thing that is prom now. But they still need to go. They need to celebrate. They need to have that sense of equity. So, we provide that. I already mentioned the snack bin situation, so providing food, because you gotta refuel your brain so you can focus. We have a Halloween boutique we do at our headquarters, so children who cannot afford Halloween costumes, 'cause they're expensive, and they're, um, you know, an extra for a lot of these kids. I'm telling you, I know we get into a situation in our own lives where we cannot appreciate the poverty and the abject poverty in which some of our children live. Please know they are the children that are sitting next to yours, and the desk next to them, they're sleeping on the floor in a room with a family of ten. So, be aware that every time you are encountering some initiative that we're doing, it's not just, that way their parents don't have to go to Walmart and get a costume. It's, they would never have the chance to go to Walmart and get a costume. That's way outside their budget. So, we bring them, we take, um, it's one of the used items we take. Prom dresses are the same, and they can come with us, and they can get their costumes and have a fun experience. And finally, last but not least, is New Beginnings. We are in New Beginnings prep mode right now. New Beginnings is our back-to-school readiness program. So, July eighteenth and nineteenth of this year, we will be at Flint River Baptist Church. That's who we partner with. And we are hoping to serve, we have three-hundred-and-fifty-six students registered. We are hoping to serve five-hundred. They come, and they get free clothes, school supplies, shoes, toiletries, haircuts, vision, hearing, wellness screening, access to dental care, eye corrective wear, and access to at least eleven other nonprofits locally that our family needs, so that it's a one-stop shop. Because we have a lot of people who have to borrow a car to get somewhere. And if you say, "Hey, okay, you're gonna go to this food pantry, but then you're gonna go over to this clothing resource, then I need you to go over here for rent assistance." They're not gonna be able to get to, they're not gonna be able to get to all three. They don't have the gas money. They don't have a vehicle. So, we're trying to create this one-stop shop where they can get the resources they need. We have the Huntsville Public Library coming, the Heels Clinic, which partners with Madison County Schools. Um, House of the Harvest is providing family move, with food boxes. I know somebody mentioned, um, about House of the Harvest. They are wonderful as well. So, it's gonna be a hub, and we need lots of volunteers, and we are fundraising like crazy right now for it. Which brings me to, how can I help? Um, there are some organizations in this area that'll say, "We don't need your money. We just need you." We need both. We need all and above. So, we need money. We, we are a hundred percent volunteer organization. No one is paid, not even me. No one is paid, which means, um, that we are living off of donations, but every single donation goes to serve these children. Um, we have a small budget, but we make it mighty. Eighty-five percent of our budget goes back to serving the kids. The fifteen percent that doesn't goes to our rent, um, our utilities, our insurance, things of that nature. That number will, that percentage will decrease as the numbers go up, right? It's a big percentage, or it's not big, but it seems bigger, just 'cause the budget is small. We're hoping to grow that, because it takes thirteen thousand dollars to establish one closet. That's just putting it in. Today at Sparkman High School, thirteen grand in the door. Six grand a year to run. That's no promotional, that's nothing else. That's just the stuff. That's not the extra programs. Those are extra, hence the word extra. So, donating as much as possible. If that's not you, but you, you got like a rich uncle, I've got pamphlets with my phone number. I, you can call me at midnight, okay, and I'll go talk to him and tell him what we're about. If you work for a company that does grants or sponsorships, strategic partnerships, we would love to have the opportunity to explain why what we're doing is so important to creating a, a vital workforce. So, keep that in mind as you see these things come through the pipeline. But we also do need volunteers. Like I said, three people every week per school. That's necessary. We also have people that come to headquarters, and then we have all kinds of other initiatives. Like, we are gonna be at Mertieville Middle School, um, hosting a, a mock Mexican restaurant. I love it. I'm so excited. They are gonna get the experience of going to a restaurant, but they can't go to the restaurant. We're gonna do it in the cafeteria, and we're gonna have our volunteers be the servers and the waiters, and, and have that whole experience of how do you order, okay? And what happens if it's not right? And how do you pay? And how do you tip? So, these kind of life skills are things that we do, in addition to all the other programs and all the other things you saw. We had some amazing volunteers putting in the closet at Sparkman today. So, we would love for you to join us. Um, there's an email on the pamphlet that I know you're gonna be running. I'm gonna have to, like, beat you off. You're gonna be running to get the pamphlet, and you'll be able to provide your email to get on our volunteer list. And by sharing, the more people who know about us is the more people who know about us. We're on Facebook, we're on Instagram, we're on LinkedIn. We're on Facebook. We're on Instagram. We're on LinkedIn. Share us. Follow us and share us and share our mission so that we can make it a reality. We don't want to exist. We don't want there to be a need for us. We want to work ourselves out of a job. But we can't do that if people don't know about us. We can't do that with an army of help and people who believe in the mission. Not sure. Talking to Monica Gray on Monday, so I'll let you know. And I will close with this. If you want to create a thriving community, you have to invest in those who have the hardest path forward, not those who have the easiest path. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Sonia.
Thank you, ma'am. Request addressed the board. David Kelly, are you here?
Yes.
Alright. Let me read this to you. Your comments will be limited to three minutes based upon your information provided. In the request addressed the board, the board will hear each of your comments and executive session on the general reputation and character exception of the Openshooting Meeting Act. So I need a motion to go to executive session.
Motion.
Second. I have a motion in second to go to executive session. Oh, wait. All those in favor? Aye. We're in executive session. And we'll be going for a few minutes. We'll come around back in a minute.
I have a motion in a second. Do I have any discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recommend approval of the contracts for services estimate.
Motion.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recommend approval of the personal items estimate.
Motion.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I recommend approval of supplemental contract estimate.
Motion.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that part concludes our board meeting regular session. We do have an executive session, an expulsion to deal with. And we'll go to executive session when we come back. Our executive session, I will be doing in a moment. Before we go to that, all those, do we have any thank you to the board before we go?
I should say thank you to everybody for hosting us. It's good to hear about things we noticed out in Canada. We're always making our way over here. So as always, we appreciate our administrators, what you do day in, day out, behind the scenes. Sure, one of mine, I took many jobs. A couple of people are training you or are educating you as well. So I should say thank you for what you do day in, day out.
I'll echo that. I'll tell you thank you, Ms. Trotter. Thank you. Thank you for everybody that showed up. I appreciate you having us.
Also, Mr. Trowick. Thank you so much for hosting.
Mr. Saverdina?
Yes, sir. So on April 28th, which is a week from Monday, we have our support employee of the year celebration at Flint River Baptist Church. They're off of Parkway in Murrayville. Unfortunately, they had some, an accident inside the reception hall, their fellowship hall. So they have to do some construction in there. So we will not be able to have the reception piece there, but the ceremony is still good to go on. And so we're making plans to change that. The reason I wanted to bring this up again to you all is like, for those of you who live out east, out west, out south, had to come, or come to Monroe Beach and you saw the traffic. If you have not been on the Parkway since they've been working on the bypass on Countess Lane there.
They even twill with law?
Yes, it's going to be a nightmare. So make sure you leave early. The ceremony will start at 5:30. We're gonna have some general conversation stuff inside the church, you know, the sanctuary there beforehand. And we're looking forward to a good evening to celebrate our support employees. And, but I want to make sure to tell them.
What do you know of the reception?
What we're going to do is we're working on, instead of them having a cake where they can gather and have cake and talk, we're actually working with, I'm gonna get it wrong, it's a bun cake company. Thank you. Nothing but buns or whatever. And so we're, we're working on getting them each a little one of that so that they have that along with their award and all to give them as they go out. So we had just, we found this out today. So we've been making plans and changing things up again, but we're gonna have something for them. And we won't have the reception, but there'll still be a really nice ceremony for the support employees. Support employee of the year. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody got anything else? I need a motion to, uh, motion to executive session. I have a motion in a second. We go to executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're in executive session.